Thank you very much and welcome to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, March 8. Uh, this meeting is being held for remote participation only. Barring any unforeseen circumstances, we anticipate potentially shifting back to a hybrid format for our next meeting. Um, again, if you're watching this and like to, in another venue would like to join, join online via video using the Zoom link available in the meeting agenda for this meeting. Like to do, join using the Zoom app, that is six three eight nine two nine one zero six zero. And there's also a dial number posted on the meeting agenda itself. This meeting is also being viewed on Norton Cable Access. Mission field paid it email questions for the board ahead of the meeting or even during the meeting to Paul D Giuseppe, the town planner. His email address is listed on the agenda for this meeting. Uh, again, every effort is being made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we're unable to do so despite best efforts, we'll post on the town Norton's website, an audio, video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. So with that out of the way, thank you very much, everyone for joining. We have a, a bigger crowd than usual, it looks like. Um, so in terms of general business, um, Paul, I don't think we had anything in terms of planning board business and policies, correct?
Correct.
Um, and we did, I know there were a couple of, um, recent bills for peer reviews, correct?
Correct. And we actually have another one that came in for, uh, one ninety-six Mansfield for the traffic peer review.
Okay.
It came in, uh, uh, yesterday.
Okay. So there will be further, uh, items on that. In terms of minutes, I believe we have minutes to approve, correct?
Turning it over to Brian.
Unless I forgot it in the email, I should have it in.
Yep, we do. And we have, uh, minutes of June the eighth, as we continue to do our, uh, backdating, and then we have February the fifteenth. Uh, so we'll go oldest first for the minutes of June the eighth. Um, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes and provide any comments?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Thank you Julie for the motion and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion? Yeah, these are the minutes for June the eighth. Making up for when we did not have a, uh, somebody co- compiling the minutes and thank you, Brian, once again, if I, if we don't say it enough. No further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna go through the board members for the role and Wayne, I will start with you.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next minutes are for February the fifteenth, which should be much fresher in our minds. Um, are there any specific, particular comments for these minutes from our previous meeting?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you Julie for the motion and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Wayne, I'll start with you again.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Let us hear both of our sets of minutes to approve. And move on to the bulk of the agenda this evening. Uh, the first item on the agenda is an A and R endorsement. Uh, this is, this is for zero, number one, three, five, three, five for zero Mansfield Avenue. Um, Paul, do you recognize the applicant here on the Zoom call?
Mr. Campbell.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. What we have for you tonight is a, uh, A and R plan. Um, uh, basically at the intersection of, uh, Mansfield Ave and Reservoir Street. If I can share a screen, I will show you what we are, uh, what we are planning on doing.
Should have that ability. Up, there you go.
So, um, frontage along Mansfield Ave. Uh, the properties from a width standpoint, uh, could be much smaller than this. Um, however, we've got wetlands. Uh, we do have other considerations as well. Uh, and the particular client, uh, would like a, a slightly larger property for, for the homes, uh, that they plan on building. So we, we do have frontage along Mansfield Ave, frontage along Reservoir, um, for, uh, access along public roads. Um, and uplands on, on each of the frontages for access as well.
Okay. I'll open up to the board to see if anybody has any specific questions about, um, this plan. Uh, Mr. Campbell, I think I just had one quick one here.
Sure.
Um, it's not, I don't think it's shown on the plan, but can you, other than lots A and B and one, two and three, which are fairly obvious where the, um, entrance to the property would be for terms of a home perspective for lots four, five and six, is that planned yet? Um, whatever you'd like to share or?
Well, four and five would have to be on Mansfield Ave, uh, in some respect. Um, Reservoir Street directly abuts the wetland, uh, along those roadways. Um, as far as six goes, I, I don't know. I don't know where they would face the house, honestly.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions regarding this, uh, potential A and R endorsement?
Motion to endorse the A and R.
A second.
Thank you Alan for the motion and Steve for the second. I'll just open it up to see if anybody on the call from members of the public has any questions they'd like the board to address.
I do.
Uh, Mr. Vincent, yes?
Yes, um.
If you could please address your questions to, to myself.
Okay, um, well, this is Greg Vincent at twenty-three Reservoir Street.
Thank you.
And I, my first thing that jumped out at me when I saw this map was, um, this property is split zone. It's not all village commercial. I don't know if, you know, Paul's aware of it, I know that. But the lots A and B and maybe part of lot four on, along Reservoir Street, that's residential. The, the, the only commercial part of this property was four hundred and fifty feet in from Mansfield Ave and that was established in nineteen seventy-nine. And it's never been changed since then. And that's holds true all the way up and down Mansfield Ave.
Um, Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
Yep, and if you can educate us a little bit, uh, on, on your map. Um, uh, first off, what is an upland?
Up, upland would be, um, land that does not fall within the wetland buffer. Am I correct, Paul? And am I oversimplifying it there?
You're, you're correct. It's a non-wetland, non, uh, yeah, it's basically a non-wetland area.
Yeah. Uh,
Really?
And one of the, we have lots of wetlands in Norton and we have lots of non-conforming lot, existing non-conforming lots, so.
Cause at twenty-three, I'm guestimating that lot B is in front of my property. Um, and I, I gotta wear knee highs when I walk out there. So I know that is some of the wettest part of this whole property. Is, is that tail end of that triangle going all the way up to the fire hydrant in the corner? Um, yeah, all of that is, is, you, you gotta wear galoshes to walk out there, especially in the springtime. Um, so yeah, you said some of these lots were not, I, I, I thought Village Commercial required a hundred and twenty feet of frontage. But I see one lot only has sixty-six feet. I mean, are these lots the way they are gonna be or, or some of these lines is gonna move?
Uh, well, the A and R plan would be dividing the lot lines. Um, Paul, can you confirm in terms of the, uh, the frontage requirements for Village Commercial here?
It's written right on the map. It says a hundred and twenty feet. So if I, I can, Mr. Chair, um,
Please.
For instance, lot two, I think is, is the lot that, that, uh, Mr. Vincent's speaking of. It, it just comes to an angle in the lot. So we have sixty-six on one side, seventy-five on the other for a total of one forty-two. It's, it's, it's just reading the map, that's all. Yeah, yeah, I'm having some difficulty reading the map here, but so if you could go, if you could go lot by lot, how would you vision the entrances, uh, without crossing over wetlands and what happened to the, the, um, percentage that you have to leave natural for the, the, uh, Water Resource Protection District?
So, Mr. Vincent, I'll, just to answer that, this is just the, um, the A and R process is just dividing up of the lot lines.
Okay.
Um, we're not looking at designs.
Here yet.
All we are doing is dividing up lines on the map. Um, so that is certainly something, um, if in this, if the, in, in a general case, if the applicant has it and they wish to share it, they certainly can and will look at it, but um, that's not something that's, uh, required at this part of the process.
Okay, so right, right now, I mean, what is the vision? What are they planning on building here? Can this add? So, um, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I, I
Please.
Currently they're planning on, on residential structures. Um, and Mr. Vincent's other question about zoning, uh, I did go over with, uh, Mr. D Giuseppe. Um, this is your, your zoning map as overlaid, uh, based upon, uh, distances from the parcels. Our, uh, company also did the survey on, on twenty-five Reservoir. So we were able to tie in the property lines with the, um, uh, zoning map fairly tightly. So we have, uh, a zoning map that looks like this. So lot A essentially, um, a portion of it crosses into a different zone line. Um, however, we created a parcel that's in excess of, of the land area requirement of that zone. Um, so we're, we're just looking for the, the A and R plan at, at this point.
Okay, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Vincent, did you have any other questions that I can help answer for you at this point?
Well, I guess we're too early in the process to answer all of my questions. We're just, this is, this is just like lot layout, but if you could then again, if you, if you wanted to, could you tell us where the entrances would be for these lots?
Yeah, I think that, um, I think I asked that of, um, at the beginning, the, obviously the lots A and B would go onto Reservoir. Lots one, two and three, and as well as four and five would go onto Mansfield Avenue. And lot C is, or lot six is, uh, to be determined at this point.
So only A and B would be on Reservoir?
Correct, due to the wetlands. On the north of lot four and five.
So you, you would have to cross the wetlands to get to A and B though?
Uh, that's upland right on, uh, Reservoir, so that would be the, uh, the entrance there, I would assume. Uh, but again, until I see a, something on the plot, um.
Yeah, but I see a, a no build line. And you're within the hundred foot wetland buffer. How do you cross over that without disturbing the wetlands?
And that would certainly be something that the, that we'd look at later in the building commission would have to review. Um, one of the things that we always put, um, and if you look in the bottom left corner of the map here, uh, the endorsement is not a determination as to conformance with zoning.
Okay.
Um, so all we are doing is, uh, putting the lines on the map. Um, and going from there.
Okay. So we're very early in this process, so there's really not much we could follow up on right now until you, your next stage is what you're telling us.
That, that would generally be correct, yes.
Okay. And, and all of us on Reservoir Street and, and across the street from Mansfield Ave, we, we're, we're all legally the butters, even though we're across the street. It's three hundred feet, I believe, from the property. Um, Assuming another application is sought, correct? Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So how, how are we gonna be able to track the progress on this as interested butters? Will it be, will it be from the planning board or is the, the builder gonna open up to us?
If, if there is another application which has a notice requirement, then you'll be notified. Um, for the, as you said, the, uh, a butters of a butters within three hundred feet, I believe is the rule. Um, so if it's three hundred feet and then every lot, the lot adjacent to that furthest lot, um, is what is notified. Um, as we said, we're just putting lines on the map. Um, the owner could choose after we approve this to decide, you know what? I don't want to build anything and then nothing happens. Um, so.
Okay, I mean, yeah, to, to give you some background on, on all us folks across the street and Reservoir Street. Um, when we first looked at building houses there and buying our houses or having our houses built as, as good insight, we went to Town Hall and we went to the assessors and we looked who owned the property. And we saw it was Wheaton College. And we saw that the assessors had it listed as R forty. Unbeknownst that this thing's been mostly commercial since nineteen seventy-nine. And I think if you look at the assessor's book currently, I think it still says it's R forty. Now I know the zone.
Can I, uh, respond to that?
Sure, Paul.
Greg, um, it's, the assessor's map is not the official zoning map.
Yep.
Um, so just, just so you're, you're, you're aware of that because this is actually a pretty common thing where assessor maps might have reference to an old zoning.
Yeah, but you can see.
Wanna look at the zoning map, you need to look at the official zoning map itself to it, you know that, of course, so.
Yeah, yeah, that was that, that crayon colored thing.
Right.
On the wall.
But it's, it's digital now, so we're making progress.
Well, you can see as prospective homeowners and stuff, we all thought we were doing our due diligence and we thought that there was always gonna be houses across the street eventually. And, and, uh, when we found, when I found out it was commercial, I, you know, I had to go to the state and file papers, find to have the town dig and find the old maps to find out when it was changed and that was in nineteen seventy-nine. Although you redid all the zoning bylaws and everything in the early nineties, was it? I think. At, at any rate, yeah, you know, so we, when we found out it was commercial, that was when, in twenty seventeen, when they were gonna try to change it to Village Commercial. Um, all of us were just fabricists. We said, you know, we would have never built or we've never bought a house if we knew that was commercial property across the street from us. Cause we were all in fear of having a seven eleven going and we'd look at the back of a seven eleven. The, the front view out of our houses. So I en- encourage that there is housing that you are planning on going there rather than a seven eleven. But but yeah, I look forward to, to seeing what the further plans are. So now that I understand this is just a lot map. And, uh, I guess I'll have to Google some of the terminology on here, cause I'm, I'm not familiar with it.
Understood.
Okay, but, but if I the all the little plants in there, that's just showing, that's not the wetland area, right?
Uh, it may be showing existing vegeta- vegetation, um, but again, we wouldn't necessarily from speaking as myself, I wouldn't necessarily rely on that, uh, because it does necessarily, uh, reflect what it would be in the, uh, in the long term.
Okay, so those, those connected dots, is that everything inside of that wetlands or no?
The, the line that's labeled WF, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, all the little WF markings, which are wetland flags.
I believe that would be the, yeah, the wetland, uh.
So everything within that circle is wetland, which more, more or less lines up with the twenty sixteen state maps of the wetlands.
Looks like the state did something right.
Yeah. Which is, it's mostly wetlands in there, so I, I
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to see something, but, um, then again, I don't know how to deal with the wetlands issues or how the town. I know, I know there've been some good instances and there's been some bad instances.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree, so, um, thank you. Obviously you've, uh, spent a lot of time working with, talking with Paul about this, so, uh, if you have any further questions, you know his phone number?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I know I was, uh, invited years ago to join your planning meeting board, but, uh, I couldn't do it and all, and clear. Cause I had this property involved, so I wasn't gonna even consider it until I, I, I wouldn't. Be, would be, uh.
I, I welcome. I will welcome any member of the public to join the board whenever they feel they're ready.
Yeah, as long as I don't have a conflict of interest.
Now I will second that too.
So, uh, okay, I'm looking forward to the next, uh, round of information.
Okay. Uh, is there any, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further comments from anyone else on the call?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, if you can, I'm going by, uh, whoever's logged into the meeting as William's iPhone. If you could just say your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Uh, Bill Rotandi, seventeen Reservoir Street. How you doing tonight?
Doing well.
So I just have a very quick question. At, at what point do we get notified of these events? Because with, without Greg stuffing our mailboxes, I don't, any but, any of us on, on this call in this neighborhood would have known about this. So at, at what point do we actually get notified?
Sure, Paul, I think I'll toss this one to you just in terms of the types of permits that's generally requi- generally come with notification to, um, to a butters?
Yeah, Bill, hi, um, so you didn't, nobody received a, a notice for this because by state law, we are, we do not, uh, notify a butters and people within, property owners within three hundred feet of an approval not required. Um, however, you will, you do get notices, like if, if this was for a site plan or a special permit, you get notices for that. Uh, you get notices for, for different, uh, for variances. Uh, comprehensive permits like forty Bs. Uh, if there's three zonings in the area, you will get people within three hundred feet. And then we tried, you know, as we build up, like, as you know, Bill, when they had the public meeting a couple of weeks ago for the proposed development along Reservoir, I emailed you. Even though that was their meeting, but I wanted to make sure I knew the people who were in that area had, um, knew about it just in case, so. But we have to follow what's in state regulations and our bylaw, so that's why nobody received an email for this, but you know, we were in touch with Greg, so I made sure he knew about this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe one of the person who was looking to speak before.
Uh, yes, this is, uh, Joanne Krogan, twenty-seven Reservoir Street.
Hi. What, what can I help you with, Joanne?
Um, I, I wanna thank Greg for letting us know about this because, um, in the approximately twenty-seven years I've lived here, I've gotten maybe two notices. And one of them was the Village Commercial. Uh, I've never gotten any notices in the butter on anything that's been attempted across the street. Uh, so I hope we are gonna be kept informed with this. Uh, one point I'd like to make is there has been a ton of accidents over the years across the street from my house directly across on that corner. Many times before cell phones, people would knock on my door, we'd be calling the police. They finally put signs, so I'm concerned about the safety for an entrance on that that corner. Because just not even two weeks ago, there was another young girl that went across the street and hit a tree. Um, so there's been hundreds of accidents on that corner and it goes inside that section. They don't hit my side because of the angle of the corner. But they go across the street on that corner. So I'd like to, that to be taken into consideration with whatever they do with a driveway. Because I would hate to see any more accidents. Um, and I had a question, what is a square foot, what is a foot, foot flex warehouse?
Let me pull this up here, so that is where is that listed if you're looking at the map here, like?
Um, okay, I'm not, I'm looking at, uh, public hearing A, B and C and it's under C, one ninety-six Mansfield Ave.
Oh, that is, uh, oh, for, uh, our discussion later, okay. Uh, flex warehouse is just an industry term for, um, it's not a full-on warehouse, but there may be some kind of manufacturing or industrial or some other work happening inside the building. It's not straight warehouse. A little bit of office, a little bit of warehouse, a little bit of something else.
Um, be notified if what's going on, man, right?
But that's, that has nothing to, that, the public hearings have nothing to do with this property at all.
Nothing, okay. Um, I had issues getting into Zoom, so I don't know, it wouldn't let me connect and all that stuff, so that's why I'm a little, I was a little late getting in and I had to do it by phone. Um, but that's, that's it. I just wanna make sure that we're, uh, we're included. And I want to very much so make sure that, um, the driveways are considered as far as the people, you know, coming down that corner with the accident.
Definitely, that, that corner coming from Reservoir onto Mansfield is not fun sometimes.
Oh, it's, I mean, it's been hundreds of accidents on that corner. Um, over the years and I would hate to see somebody pulling out of a driveway, get wiped out because of the corner being that bad.
Yeah, definitely.
What type of housing? Are these gonna be, uh, single family dwellings?
Uh, that is not part of the plan that we're looking at now. Right now, we're just putting the lot lines on the paper.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to ask any questions? Okay. Mr. Vincent, you have one more?
Actually, just to clarify, the areas you was talking about, it's and, and it, it is in front of her house. It's right where the fire hydrant is, right where the telephone pole is. Both of those have been hit many times. In the twenty-two years I've been here, I know fifteen accidents in that corner? Fifteen or more. Um, one of them really, really bad. Uh, yeah, that would be something to consider. And the other thing is, is I, I know that there's other projects going further down the street. And, and if this, this, the city could, I mean, the city, the town has considered any sidewalks and then the hotbed for the other project going down the street is is the, the, the sewage. Um, it's gonna go all the way down Reservoir Street. I don't know if this contractor is gonna be involved with it as well, is gonna team up with the other contractor. But the concern of all thirty-five resident, residences along Reservoir Street here is the costs. The cost is, you know, you've got fifteen K just for the privilege tying in. The cost is, you know, you've got fifteen K just for the privilege tying in. And then a lot of these homes are two hundred, three hundred, six hundred feet from the street. Some of them are down, they're gonna need ejector pumps and prohibitive costs to tie into a sewage system. If they're gonna have the either one builder or a sorium of builders pay to put this sewage system in. Will there be any consideration of waiving the connection fees or something because? You know, I I when my house was built, it was a forty-five thousand dollar septic system, leaching fields. And that was twenty-two years ago. So um I've gotten, some people tell me I'm looking at close to sixty grand. They're laid three hundred and fifty feet of pipe, put in a sewer um. Not a sewer ejection pump, it's called something else, I forget what the terminology, but yeah, and I have to pump it uphill. So, yeah, there's some tremendous costs amongst the thirty-four, thirty-five residences along Reservoir Street. Some of those are like if you take Patrick Chung's house or the Conservation Committee Chairman's house. You know how long their driveways are? My neighbor at twenty-three, he measured it out, he's seven hundred feet, so. And he's downhill too, so.
Yeah, I think that I know that for depending on the project, that there are programs available in terms of financing thing for sewer and connections. Uh, I would love to say more, but I'm gonna have to hold that's not my department card at this point.
Yeah, just keep that in mind, uh.
Definitely.
You'll have thirty-five very upset residents in this town if we have to, for force to tie in. Which I know. And and I know in the case, if you sell your property, you have to, you have to do it. That's the latest law, I believe, that was changed, I don't know, fifteen, sixteen years ago, whatever. Before, you used to have to pay for Title Five, and if you passed, you were okay, you would just pay a betterment fee. But now, if you sell your property, I have to connect. And I can't afford sixty thousand dollars, I wanna go sell my house. Yeah.
That's a, that's a big hit for anybody, I understand.
Especially on fixed income now, that'll be tired.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vincent, we'll definitely look to keep that in mind as much as we can. Um, as we continue to see this project through. Uh, are there any further comments uh regarding this project, otherwise we do have a motion and a second on the floor? Hearing no further discussion, I'll go to the members for a vote on the motion, again, the motion is to endorse the A and R for Zero Mansfield Avenue. Uh, Wayne, I will start with you. Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, uh I'll be signing this in a short order, and then you can go ahead and file it.
Thank you, have a nice night.
Yep, you too.
Thank you.
Everybody who joined for that part of the meeting is certainly welcome to stay for continued discussion on our next hearing, this is public hearing SP one three four ninety-one for three thirty-nine Old Old Colony Road. Uh, it's an application to construct, or it's an application to convert a two-unit home into three units. Uh, and I do see the applicants here on the call. Uh, so if you'd like to just kind of introduce yourself to the board and uh just give us a quick overview what you're looking to do.
Oh, good evening, I'm Steve Cabral with Crossman Engineering of one oh three Commonwealth South North Alabot. And also on the call, I see that there's Michael and Joan, the the owners of the property. And what what I'll do, I'll just quickly share my screen, just to call up the site plan.
Please do.
Okay, uh the first image, I just wanted to provide an aerial view, just so that everyone understands the the property. And basically, this is the home at three thirty-nine Old Colony. And it I actually, it's it's, as you all know, it's a very nice home, very large home. And according to the town records, it was built in approximately nineteen oh two. And it's about thirty-three hundred square feet. And as you know, it's set in a prominent location, set way back from, you know, from the roadway. It's certainly a very attractive piece of land and a very attractive building. And the goal of the project is to maintain that attractive appearance. And in order to do that, we're not proposing any changes to the exterior site or the the exterior facade at all. Uh currently, it's a a single-family home with an accessory apartment, which is allowed by rights in the Village Commercial District. And what we're proposing to do is to add one more unit in inside, you know, the main home. And what we found, you know, first we performed a survey of the property and we confirmed confirmed that there were no there are no wetlands on the property. The entire site is outside of the Hundred Year Flood Zone. And the site is also beyond the Water Resource Protection District. We also found that when the septic system was built in I believe it was in the mid two thousands, maybe two thousand eight or so, it was designed for, you know, nine bedrooms, and with the proposed conversion there'll be only eight bedrooms in the home, so therefore, the existing septic system that was built. And we do have a copy of the ass built, is more than suitable to accommodate the the three units. Because as you all know, uh the Title Five septic system design is based upon the number of bedrooms in the inner facility. And now I'll just go to the site plan, and you know, basically, there's the you know, the the thirty-three hundred square foot home, and there's a a garage or an old barn. Now, there are no units proposed in that barn, but the old garage, all of the three units will be in the the main building. And based upon the layout of the existing driveway, and there's like a a mini cul-de-sac within right in front of the home. We're able to provide the required parking, so that we do believe that we conform to all of the zoning requirements in regards to dimensional setbacks as well as the the required parking ratios. So I know you'll have a busy night. So I I won't go on any further, but but again, we just like to might make modifications to the inside of the existing home to allow an additional unit, which is allowed in the B C zone by a a special permit. And again, we do meet all of the dimensional standards, and the owner's goal truly is to maintain the integrity and appearance of the existing home inside.
Okay.
I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Uh, Paul, I'll I'll start with you, I know we've had discussions about accessory apartments and definitions and everything like that. Was there anything in terms of um this plan conforming that jumped out to you at all, or is uh?
No, and especially since they're not changing the, you know, the footprint of the building and and uh uh three units is allowed. Uh, you know, by special permit in Village Commercial that uh we don't see anything that would have triggered uh uh, you know, anything related back to this site that would be an issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, members of the board have any specific questions uh for Mr. Cabral that they'd like to ask at this time? I'll say I'm impressed, this may, this may be one of the few lots in Norton of this size where there are no wetlands, because it's up on that hill.
Yes, we were fortunate.
Mr. Chair, as uh Mr. Cabral mentioned, it is a beautiful house, I happen to look at the most real recent real estate transaction and uh it's quite a beautiful property uh in addition to the home itself. And then never knew it was up there, it's quite a gem, um. So, Mr. Chair, if there are no other discussions, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit thirteen four ninety-one.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin, for the motion, and Julie for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Okay, hearing none, I will go through the members for a vote. Uh, Mr. Cabral, you probably stopped sharing your screen, there you go. Uh, Wayne, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Okay, tha- thank you all, we appreciate the time.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yep, good night.
Okay. Moving right along here. Uh, X M R agenda is special permit one three five four three and SPR one three five four four for three ninety-four Old Colony Road. Uh, this is an application to construct and run a marijuana delivery service. Um, Paul, before I have the applicant present, uh I know we had members of the Economic Development Commission slated to join. Uh, do we need to have them call anything to order at this point, given the number of people that are here?
I see uh Sandy Olerhead and Laura Parker here. I cannot, uh I don't see anyone else. So um I they can, you know, so they wouldn't, the the E D C does not need to open a meeting, even though they've posted it on their agenda, and then we amended yours to consider that they could, but uh I'm sure Sandy and Laura will wanna be able to speak when the time is is right, because they they've been heavily involved with this project.
Okay, well, if we get to that point and they do need to call a meeting due to their quorum, we will cross that bridge when we get there. Uh, but in that case, um I'll turn it over to the applicant to kind of make their initial kind of presentation regarding the project. And go from there. Hello?
Hi, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Alyssa Noak, and I'm the owner of Lucky Green Ladies. I have a few members from my team here, uh Jose Pichardo from Green Seal Environmental. I have Kristen Braun from Ron Mueller and Associates, as well as my attorney Nicholas Obolensky. Uh, Jose, did you wanna start off by sharing your screen on the site plan?
Uh, sure.
I mean, I know if you have any issues with the Zoom meeting, you should be able to share.
I can go first, Jose, if if.
Can you see the screen there?
No, not yet.
Yeah, I guess if you wanna go first, that's fine, I I don't seem to be able to do it.
No, I'll go first.
You on the bottom, where it says share screen?
Yes, sh- share screen, I've been clicking that and.
Then did you pick which uh screen you wanted to share? I could also pull it up on my end too.
Yeah, that that'd be good, if you could do that, I can.
Yeah, give me one moment.
Gotta love technology, sometimes, sometimes it's great, and sometimes it just kind of shoots you in the foot, but we're all doing the same thing here.
Give me one moment. Okay, how 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 do we see that?
We do see the screen, thank you very much.
All right, so basically, the existing lot uh contains approximately one point two acres of land. Um, it's currently can be accessed from three different points. Uh, it wants me to keep on sharing the screen.
We see uh.
Okay, so it's currently can be accessed from three different points. Um, one to the at the west over here. And the uh the second out, the the second curb cut is the west, I used to see my um cursor or not?
No, we're we're looking at uh green, so we wouldn't see your cursor. Uh, but there's definitely, there's two curbs to the building, definitely, we we see that.
So. The um, there's a third access to the property, which is um provided by the um at the property line um where two two parcel number two sixty is. Uh, it is, it is at the um southeast property lot. Property uh property line and uh it's under a common ownership and and you say it's leads to a private road that ultimately uh connects to O- Old Colony Road. Uh, the the site has two buildings, uh six thousand five hundred square foot at the front. And at the back has a four thousand square foot building where the proposal is gonna take place, at Unit B located at the um southwest portion of the building. The um the site is serviced by municipal water, is also the sanitary sewer is provided by our own site. Um, sanitary sewer, septic system, uh it's located at the back of the building almost at the center of the two units. Um, we.
I did see that marked on the plan, thank you.
We um, the electric service is provided by overhead wires coming uh by utility poles from the Route one twenty-three as well. The um exterior lighting is gonna be provided by the existing um wall packs attached to the building. That um no changes o- over there, we have the drainage that is controlled by three leaching cache basins. In obviously, the um imperious areas that the site has all around the the perimeter of the property. Um, sections three and four from from the project narrative. Uh, we provided how the site compliant with zoning and how the site comply with the um zoning regulator, with the planning regulator aspects. We basically this site, we're not proposing any changes to the um to the exterior, so those are mostly created when you have a development or redevelopment, the idea for this is to utilize utilize the existing uh site futures as they are. And um it is important to note that we met pre-application on November twenty-second with the department heads kind of like to get a initial comments. And from there, the relevant comment we had was about the parking spaces that maybe the site would not have enough. And it was recommended to provide a traffic report, a traffic study, so we have done that, and as a result, we had to propose four additional spaces to the site uh to comply with that. And those are gonna be added to the adjacent lot, which is on the same ownership, we have permission to do that. And these are not going to be striped, it's just gonna be utilized um as it is right now, he's got some cars parked over there, so now she's gonna have uh the ability to park their vehicles over there. Other than that, um, it it's very straightforward site matters. It's an existing site that has already been approved by um the um permitting granting authorities and to the best of our knowledge, is. to the best of our knowledge, it means meets all of the, um, regulations that are applicable.
Thank you, Jose. I I I agree, we don't necessarily, uh, we're not looking at a whole lot of changes to impervious area, obviously, here.
In fact, there's no, no impervious areas that we're gonna be at at all.
Yeah, exactly. So, uh, Ms. Noah, would you like to continue kind of with the rest of your team, or would you like us to stop and ask questions now at each kind of, uh, phase, or do you wanna keep going?
Whatever is easiest for you.
Well, at this point, we keep going and, uh, if members of the board have questions, um, we can circle back to on that point, if that works for you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So I got an opportunity to introduce myself, uh, when we we first started the meeting, but again, my name's Alyssa Noak and I'm the owner of Lucky Green Ladies. We are proposing a marijuana home delivery establishment, uh, at three ninety-four Old Colony. Tonight, I'll just be going over who we are, some of our business operation, a bit about the floor plan, security plan, and then I have Kristen Braun here from Ron Mueller and Associates. That will talk about the traffic study that was conducted in our parking plan. So we're a delivery operator business, and that's important to note because the Cannabis Control Commission has two different delivery licenses that are available. One's the courier and one's the operator. Uh, operator is very, very similar to a retail store, but as you could imagine, uh, there's no customers on site. But we are able to buy products wholesale from licensed cultivators and manufacturers, store those products at our facility and then deliver them directly to our customers. The courier is more like an Uber Eats, um, where they have to partner with a dispensary and they're delivering the dispensary's products. Um, so the dispensary almost serves as the middleman between the delivery business, um, and the customer. Uh, we're a small locally owned business. I'm a resident of Bellingham, so just down four ninety-five. I'm doing this business with my mom, Duann Noak, and I'm also a social equity participant. What that means is that I get preferential treatment from the Cannabis Control Commission, and it's actually the only reason why I'm able to um, have this type of license is because the status of my, the program that I'm in. Um, the commission passed a three-year exclusivity period, only allowing social equity and economic empowerment participants to operate delivery licenses, uh, for the first three years, and that period has not started yet. Here's a street view of our location. As you can tell, it's kind of tucked away in the back, which is perfect for our use. Because again, we don't have any customers coming to the site. I'm kinda just wanna, um, hide away back there, and that's exactly what this site does. Um, which is great for us. We'll be open seven days a week. Um, we're required by the commission to only make deliveries between eight A M and nine P M. But we will have employees at the facility preparing for the day, packaging last minute orders and getting ready, starting at six A M. And then everyone will leave by ten at night. We'll have eighteen employees that work per day, but nine per shift. Um, thirty-six employees in total, as people can't work every day. Um, we'll have four delivery vehicles, three that will be in operation, and one that will serve as a backup in the event that one of our vehicles will break down. So how it kinda works is that we receive orders from our customers online. We have an ordering, uh, software company. Um, customers will be able to add their items to the cart. And at that point, they put their address in, their I D is checked and verified. Um, and we're gonna ask customers to order the night before. But we will offer same-day deliveries for Norton, Attleboro, and Ton. Uh, once the order is ordered and paid for, um, a manifest is automatically generated. On that manifest, it has the customer's contact information, um, a picture of their I D, what they got in their order, and, uh, the total. That manifest will be handed to an order packer, who will get the products from the inventory room. Um, and then fill those products and put them in a brown biodegradable bag, and the manifest will be stapled to the bag. Uh, we have two different rooms that will have product in them. One is a vault room and the other is the inventory room. And why there's a difference between the two is that not everyone will have access to the vault room. Um, that will, only people that will have access to that room are myself and the other managers. Um, so during the day, when order packers are doing their thing and and working, it's way more efficient for us to keep the product in the inventory room so they can grab it as they need to fill the orders. Uh, but at the end of the night, all the product and the orders that were filled for the next day, um, will go into the vault and will be locked and secured overnight. Um, I mentioned that we're very similar to a retail store and aside the fact that we won't have any customers, um, coming to our site. Another key difference between the two is the child proof packaging. So retailers, when they buy wholesale from their suppliers, let's just say they're able to buy marijuana in one big bag. And then they hire their employees to package that marijuana and, um, measure it out and and weigh it into individual quantities. And for us, we're actually required by the Cannabis Control Commission to purchase this product already packaged. So there'll be no raw marijuana that's exposed to the open air, which completely eliminates the smell of the product since everything is sealed and nothing is being, um, nothing is out in the open.
Before you go to the next, uh, if you could just go back to that, um, so you mentioned the I D check and verification. Um, that process is all run through, I assume that's run through a state process?
Yes, we have us another software company that integrates with the, um, online ordering company that checks the automatically checks the license number and also the address, because we're not allowed to deliver to certain places. So it checks the address as well to make sure that that person is able to receive delivery and that they are twenty-one years of age or older.
Thank you.
Of course. So employees, the drivers will arrive at the facility at seven thirty. They will pull their vehicles one by one into, um, one bay door, the other one will be permanently closed. Um, and then they will load their orders into the lockbox, um, get their manifest for the day, and then be off. Well, they'll be leaving in ten-minute increments so that, you know, everyone's not rushing out of the facility at the same time. So we expect that to take place between seven forty-five and eight thirty. Um, they'll come back around three thirty to change their shift. Um, and at that point, while they're, um, returning any undeliverable items or and they also have to count the cash from their vehicle, um, at that same time, uh, the second shift employees will be loading up their delivery vehicle, collecting their manifest, and will be heading off for their second shift. Um, the second shift employees will return anytime between nine and nine thirty, count their cash, return any undeliverable items, and then if needed, help the facility employees lock up. Um, you know, put the product in the safe, um, lock all the doors, and make sure that the facility is secure and ready uh, for business the next day. But everyone will go home the latest at ten o'clock. Uh, we will be receiving deliveries from our suppliers. Um, we're there, they are required to, um, make those deliveries at random times. But I will most definitely ask them to not come when either, uh, at seven thirty when the drivers arrive or at three thirty when the shift is changing, just so that they're able to pull in the bay door and conduct make their delivery then. But in the event that they can't come at any other time and they have to come at three thirty or seven thirty, we have a second secured receiving area at the back of the facility, and I'll I'll show you in a in a second. Um, where we, they have a space to come in the back door, um, we're able to weigh out and inventory our product under the camera. And then that product, um, goes right into the vault room.
And the random times is a security measure?
Yes. And required on their part by the the commission. And then if you can see my cursor, um, this is the bay door where the vehicles will drive in. Uh, these are shel- this is shelving on the side here, where in the morning, let's say seven fifteen or seven thirty, um, orders will be placed here, one for each, uh, delivery vehicle. Um, this is that back door that I was referencing. Here's that re- secured receiving area um, which has direct access to the vault room. Um, the vault room has metal casing around it, so it's an extra, um, deterrent if anybody breaks into the facility. Uh, but here's the inventory room, packaging room, packaging room, and, um, my office, which will have the safes. This is actually the front door to the facility.
I know the state has different regulations about the vaults and all that stuff, and so, yeah.
Sure, and I'm gonna touch on security right now, yes. Um, so different from a retail store, I know that you've seen one before the board before. Um, you know, where they're allowing customers. Our whole facility is a limited access area. Um, you know, there, you need a, uh, agent I D card to even swipe into the front door. Uh, but I've mentioned before that we have that extra level of security in the vault room and in the I T room. So only myself and the other managers will have access to those rooms. Our security plans were approved by Chief Clark and the Cannabis Control Commission. We have our alarms monitored by a third-party company. And we have commercial-grade cameras that will monitor all points of entry and exit. Uh, the vault areas, overhead doors, our receiving areas, the parking areas, as well as the panic alarms. Uh, the police department will have access to, remote access to our camera system, and they're able to view that at any time. And that's not only the, um, facility cameras, but also our cameras inside the vehicle. Uh, we'll have commercial-grade locks on all exterior doors, and then we'll also have a roof access to kind to give us an extra level of security. Inside the vehicle, we're required by the Cannabis Control Commission to have two agents per vehicle. One stays in the vehicle at all times, the driver, while the other that's actually making the transaction with the customer wears a body camera. Uh, inside the vehicle, there's two cameras, one in the cargo area where there are two separate lock boxes, one for the product and one for the cash. Uh, and then another, uh, camera in the driver's area that will capture the driver and the second agent. Um, we have four G cellphone service in our vehicle, so there'll be Wi-Fi in the car. And that also allows our cameras to be accessed at any point in time on live footage we can see. Uh, it's also a regulation by the Cannabis Control Commission that product cannot be seen from the outside of the vehicle. So we've been in contact with the Norton Police Department about this, um, because we need to do some type of window tinting or covering. They suggested like a vinyl kerf. Uh, but whichever option we decide to move forward on, and we're still discussing this with them. Um, we can't have any product that's visible from the outside. They don't even want a box. Even though all the product will be in the box, they don't wanna see that either. Um, so we'll have to do something around, um, the window tinting. And then we're also required to have all of our vehicles unmarked. We actually just purchased our first vehicle. It's a Toyota Prius, so pretty normal, everyday car. And honestly, you won't even know that it's delivering cannabis, um, because it's completely unmarked. I mentioned, but we'll have two, um, boxes in the vehicle, one for the product and then one for the cash. I've just actually purchased the product box, because we're fitting up that vehicle now. And, um, you know, if you're familiar with the truck's underbody box, it's imagine a truck bed. Um, it's, they usually go to the side of the truck bed, and it's like a huge steel box where the door flips down. It has a lot, it's extremely heavy. Um, so we'll be bolting those down to the vehicle, because we're required to have these boxes that are, um, not easily removable. Um, also required to have a G P S system in the car. Um, this will be located under the dashboard, so, um, people won't be able to easily remove it either. You know, that would require taking up the whole dash, and this will be on and operational at all times. So we'll be able to track our drivers wherever they are. Um, and and again, we are also required to check in with the dispatch every thirty minutes. So that's why, um, in my floor plan, I had a little dispatch office because we have to check in with the drivers every thirty minutes to make sure everything's okay, check where they are, their location, and and what stop on their route that they're at. And then I have Kristen here that's gonna go over this, and excuse my terrible drawing, but I just wanted to give the board a view of, um, where the parking spaces that we're like, you know, which ones are ours. So the red X's are all the where the employees will park. And then the green X's are where our company vehicles will park. Um, this green X that's kind of in no man's land over here, um, that's because we'll park one vehicle inside the unit overnight. Um, and again, these, uh, parking spaces will be under surveillance. And I'd like to turn it over to Kristen, who's gonna talk about our traffic study and the parking plan.
Yeah, uh, thanks Alyssa and thanks to the board for having us. Um, just again, Kristen Braun, Traffic Engineer with Ron Mueller Associates. Um, so we did perform a traffic assessment for the site, um, really to just grasp, um, if there were any traffic impacts, if any. Uh, so we did do a trip generation estimate for the site. Generally, we use I T trip generation data, which is really the nationally accepted way um, to develop, uh, trip generation estimates for any sort of site. Uh, for this site, though, as Alyssa was speaking to, it's a little bit different than your standard marijuana dispensary. Um, there is a land use for that, but it's not really fitting for this scenario, given that there's no, uh, sales occurring on site. So what we really did to to estimate the number of trips for the site is we used all the operational data Alyssa was mentioning uh, regarding shift times, number of employees, uh, deliveries to the site, any, any shift turnovers. And we really wanted to look at the impacts of the site specifically during peak commuting hours. Um, generally, that's, uh, usually a two-hour period in the morning, uh, between seven and nine A M. And then a two-hour period in the afternoon, uh, typically between four and six P M. So what we found, given all the operational information, was we can expect about nine trips during the weekday A M peak hour uh, with six entering and three exiting vehicles. Uh, during the weekday P M peak hour, there's a lesser impact with only three trips expected, all exiting vehicles. Uh, we also looked at on a daily basis how much traffic this site will be generating, and really, there will only be fifty trips. Uh, equal amount entering and exiting expected on a daily basis. So when we, when we dispersed this traffic out onto the adjacent streets, we took a look at what kind of additional impacts we're gonna put on Old Colony Road. And what we found is that there, there will be only one to five additional cars, both east and west of the site, which is really minimal. Um, it's well within any sort of daily fluctuation of traffic. And it's also below any guidelines for Mass dot traffic impact assessment. Um, we really don't even come close to needing to, you know, perform any capacity analyses out here. Um, as Alyssa said, we also looked at the parking demand on site. We are providing twenty-two parking spaces, as Alyssa just showed. Uh, we looked again at the same operational information, the number of employees, the shift times, deliveries. Uh, and we also tried to look at it in the worst-case scenario, assuming, um, shift times are overlapping. So all, all employees will be on site at the same time. Uh, we also assumed, uh, uh, that there would be deliveries, uh, during the day. And and so we really looked at it in a conservative manner, and what we found was that the max number of parking spaces that we can expect to be occupied is only nineteen spaces. Uh, so given that twenty-two spaces are proposed on site, uh, we have definitely enough parking to accommodate, you know, even a maximum demand out there. Um, typically, as part of these traffic assessments, too, we like to look at the safety of the site access points. Uh, so we did go out to the site and we took a look at site distances from the site driveways to make sure that anybody exiting the site, uh, you know, has adequate site distance to meet minimum requirements, which are based on speeds of the adjacent roadway. Uh, and what we found is that there is more than enough site distance, site distance, looking, um, either direction from the site driveways to really, to really provide safe operations out there. Um, and that's just a quick summary of the traffic assessment. I'll be able to answer any other specific questions, um, anyone may have. Uh, but with that, I'll turn it back over to Alyssa.
Thank you. And that is the end of our presentation. I'll turn it back over to the Chairman of the Board, and, um, we can go about answering any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Noah. Um, the members of the board have any questions, uh, for the applicant at this time? Um, otherwise, I think, um, obviously, we'd like to hear from the members of the Economic, uh, Planning Commission, uh, who are with us here.
Listen, Chair, just one quick question. Will the vehicles be registered in the town of Norton?
Yes, yes, they will be.
Great, thank you.
Okay, not hearing anything at this point, but, uh, so if we wanted to bring in any members from the Economic Development Commission who wanted to, uh, to speak at this point, obviously. to speak at this point, obviously, um, as the team from Lucky Reliance has discussed. They've been uh, working with the town for a period of months, so. We see, we don't hear you yet, there we go.
Uh, behalf of, or at least, you know, my, give me my feedback side. Um, yeah, we, Alyssa has been meeting with the EDC and actually coming to just so many of our meetings. Yeah, I think, I think she's there more than I am, some of our meetings. So she's been a really, really active, um, you know, with, with working with us. Um, first, you know, with, with trying to get a retail license, and when that didn't work, she just really was committed to staying in Norton and um, you know, came up with this new, new proposal. Um, just what's really impressed me is just she's always been willing to answer any questions, concerns you've had, so she's been super responsive to that. Which um, to me, I think is one of the most important qualities you have in a new business. This is still somewhat of an unknown, you know, business that we um, that we're entering into, and I think just having, knowing that she will respond to um, to concerns right away is, is, is a big piece of, of what's made me comfortable, um, you know, having her come to the, into town. So I think, you know, she's clearly committed to, excuse me, locating her business in Norton and to being a good neighbor in Norton. Um, so we've, you know, been, been really impressed with, I think, uh, just how her level of commitment and and, and responsiveness to, to what she thinks our concerns are.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay. Again, I'll go to members of the board to see if we have any specific questions for the applicant at this time. Paul, while there, maybe he's coming up with any thoughts that they may have. Um, if we, just to um, lay out the ABCs of this application, obviously, all of the uh, projects that go through the Cannabis Control Commission have a number of different layers of meetings and approvals and things like that. So just to reset everybody, what uh, next steps would be in regards to this process?
Well, y- you have uh, two decisions in front of you, and this is the requirement of the marijuana bylaw. Which uh, you have a special permit for marijuana. And then, uh, it also requires a site plan. Uh, all, any project involving marijuana requires both a special permit and a site plan, so. So as you get your way to that decision, um, after, and assuming this gets approved. And then goes through the twenty-day appeal period. Alyssa then needs to record it, but then bring that decision to the Cannabis Control Commission. Um, and in the meantime, then start filing for the uh, the perk, any building permit she needs, which is essentially would be remodeling. In this case, uh, uh, the Cannabis Control Commission, ultimately, after the building commissioner issues the building permits. The final step in this process is the Cannabis Control Commission. The final approval is the Cannabis Control Commission giving its final approval of the project, but it happens after uh, we issue the building permits.
Thank you. I think it's always good to reset on all of that, especially when to feel like the applicants in this case are kind of treated like a volleyball, unfortunately. So, um, again, any questions for um, the applicant? We had a traffic study, we had um, review from Greens Hill Environmental. Um, otherwise, I'd open it to any members of the public who'd like to ask questions.
Tim, can I, can I ask just one quick question?
Please.
So, so Alyssa, I, I personally like your graphic with the X's for the parking spaces. Is, is that part of your lease to use all those spaces, and that's not conflicting with any of the other uses in the adjacent? You know, I know, obviously, you're using half of that one building, and then there's a building in front. I'm assuming there's enough parking to um, cover everybody who's using uh, uh, those uh, buildings on that parcel.
Yes, uh, to answer your first question, yes, it's in our lease, and no, it's not conflicting with anyone else. Um, the tenants that do, uh, the tenants that exist there already, um, they don't need many parking spaces, like the, for example, the person right next to me, it's just an office, so they only need two spaces. And then um, there, there's three units in the front building, but one of them is used as storage. And then Ron's transmission, he only needs his half of the front spaces, and then um, next to him is a cleaning service that um, just needs their front of this, their, their half of the spaces.
Okay, and then um, there's abundant amount of documentation for us to read, which was excessive, so well done. I, I did wanna just mention, and maybe you wanna just touch on it, I think, just, just for the record. Cause I thought it was, it was a nice piece of information that, that you had provided, is, you know, you did a good job of, of letting us know that, you know, it's all gonna be prepackaged, there's nothing gonna be exposed to the air. But I did see that there was at least, you know, documentation on your part that should there be complaints of, of any type of odor, you kind of have a, a plan in place for that. I, I found that to be extremely proactive, so you might just wanna reference that for the record, um, in case anybody had any questions on that.
Sure, so we're not initially putting um, the CO2 filter in, uh, or the air filter in. Because um, you know, like I said, it's um, everything's prepackaged and those are sealed tight. So there shouldn't be any um, odor that is emitted from the product. But in the event, you know, one of the butters, or even anybody, um, anybody complains. Um, I'm more than happy to um, consult with an, um, an order, odor professional. And get um, an air purifying system put in, so that that issue can be nipped in the butt immediately.
Yeah, so that, that was very good, very proactive of you to have that, you know, kind of at our disposal. Uh, and something that, you know, obviously, we would include as documentation within the, the permit, so I commend you on that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. If any members of the public who are on the call would like to ask any questions, uh, please go ahead. If you'd like to raise your virtual hand using the Zoom meeting functionality, you can do that as well. Uh, but again, if you have any questions, please address them to myself, um, and we'll address them accordingly. Okay. Nobody is speaking up yet, but I'll ramble for a couple of seconds in case anybody's just having trouble getting off mute here. Okay. Other than that, um, members of the board, uh, obviously, we have a special permit decision and a site plan decision related to this project. I don't think we're waiting for anything in terms of peer reviews or anything like that at this point, Paul, so. The action would be to the board, correct?
Correct, uh, we didn't, we didn't go out for peer review, but staff looked at this very closely. And again, we worked very closely with Alyssa, Jose and her team, and they were very responsive. And because of the small-scale nature of this, we, we didn't think a peer review was warranted. In fact, if it weren't for the fact that it was marijuana, this wouldn't even, if this was another business, this wouldn't even be in front of you. Because it's essentially a remodel, so, but um, yeah, we had, the questions we had, which were largely around the parking, have, we felt were resolved.
Tim, do you want to do this in two motions, or?
Do we have to close the public hearing first, though, Tim?
Yes, we would.
Okay, I'll motion to close the public hearing.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, which means we will not be taking any further comments. Um, Alyssa, I'll go to you, just to make sure that you're comfortable with us closing the public hearing. Which means that if you have, oh, there's another documentation that I wanted to submit, you can't. But otherwise, we move forward.
Yes, I'm comfortable, as long as none of the residents have anything they would like to add.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. And hearing no further comments, I will go to the members for a vote. Wayne, I will start with you.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the public hearing for the special permit is closed. And again, we have a site plan and a special permit. Uh, so if we wanted to take action on those pieces, that would be two different motions.
Motion to approve the special permit.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion, and Julie, I think, got the second there, Alan, sorry. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the special permit? And hearing none, Wayne?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that was the special permit, we do still have the site plan outstanding.
A motion to approve the site plan.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion, and Kevin for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Wayne?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Well, that concludes our discussion on this agenda item at this point. Um, Alyssa, thank you very much, you and your team, for your presentation. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you in future.
Thank you guys so much, I really appreciate it, and thanks for having me on tonight.
Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. So the final item on our agenda is another public hearing. This is Special Permit one three five four zero and Site Plan Review one three four seven nine. Regarding one ninety-six Mansfield Avenue. Uh, actua for construction of a hundred thousand square foot flex warehouse. Paul, and I know there was some discussions about this project earlier today at another town board's meeting. So um, I'm not sure if you and the applicant discussed who, what, how it makes sense to lead off this discussion?
Yeah, I would um, leave it, I see uh, Elias is on, on the call, so I leave it to him, uh, to, to, there he is. Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking for you, Elias, but um, I think it's just best to um, let Elias lead off with it, and we can fill in as, as uh, he goes along.
Sounds good. Alyssa, thank you very much for joining us this evening, sorry to keep you waiting. Um, please go right ahead.
Good evening, everybody, thank for this time, your time this evening. My name is Elias Petuchas, um, developer of this project. Uh, I have here Kevin Soli, who's our civil engineer, AKC Birch. Uh, from Soli Engineering, they will be uh, presenting our, our site plan this evening. Uh, I did meet with the uh, Water and Sewer Commission earlier this evening. Uh, and along with the seller of the property to uh, confirm uh, a few uh, items regarding water and sewer. Uh, which we'll be discussing with them, uh, again, I believe, at another meeting, so. Uh, Kevin, I will uh, I will let you take it from here, uh, as a presenter. I, I do wanna thank everyone here for the opportunity, uh, for this project, we're very excited. Uh, Kevin, take it away.
Thanks, Elias, uh, good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Soli, I'm a licensed professional engineer at Commonwealth with Soli Engineering. Office located at eleven Vanderbilt Ave in Norwood, Mass. Um, so thanks, Elias, for that introduction, we're here on behalf of Elias, who's the applicant. Um, for a project at one ninety-six Mansfield Avenue in Norton. Uh, with here this evening is Casey Birch from my office, who's gonna, I'm gonna just give a broad overview of the project, he's gonna run through some technical uh, components. Um, I'm gonna bring back, end it up, and talk about uh, traffic and uh, uh, arch, building architecturals, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Um, just uh, we're currently, uh, we currently have an application pending with the Conservation Commission. We had an initial public hearing with them earlier this month, and we have another meeting next Wednesday. Um, we uh, have received some peer review comments uh, for uh, regarding our application. We are currently preparing uh, comprehensive responses to those comments, we can satisfactorily address all of them. Um, you know, we didn't want to uh, drop new plans on the commission, um, you know, obviously, so close to the hearing. So uh, we will be submitting those in the next couple, the next couple of days. But we wanted also um, go through our presentation this evening and solicit any other feedback or comments or questions that the board may have, and um, hopefully incorporate those as well. Um, so just really quick, just to orient everyone. Um, can, can everyone see my screen?
We do see the uh, the opening slide with the building rendering.
Yes.
There we go, okay.
All right, great, so uh, the site's located at one ninety-six Mansfield Ave. Um, uh, to the south, uh, the large industrial development, um, to the north, uh, the, uh, Norwood, Nor- Norton PBA, the Arnold Palmer Boulevard.
Okay.
Um, uh, and our site comprises two parcels. Uh, I'm going to pass it over to Casey Birch, who's going to run through some of our proposed site statistics. But we are proposing a one hundred thousand square foot um, flex warehouse building. Um, I know there's a question earlier, you know, the reason we called it Flex Warehouse, because wanna maintain some flexibility from a potential tenant standpoint. We, we do not currently have a specific tenant for this project. Um, but we wanna build in some flexibility to entice a number of different uh, potential operators who are, who, who would be interested in Norton market, market. And we think that we have a, 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 we've got a pretty good plan, which can satisfy a number of users and, and bring a um, sizable and, and meaningful development to the, to the community. Um, so with that, I'm gonna pass it over to Casey, who's just gonna run through some of the technical components of our application. Casey, you on?
Can you guys hear me?
Hello?
There we go, now we hear you. Um, yeah, for the record, my name is Casey Birch, I'm a civil engineer with Soli Engineering. Um, and as Kevin mentioned, I will be going through the uh, technical aspects of the project with you tonight. Um, starting with the site plan, um, I guess we can actually stay on the rendering, cause it's a lot prettier than, than our black and white site plan. So let's, let's go through that. Um, again, the project proposes a one hundred thousand square foot flex warehouse building. Uh, with associated, associated podium parking and loading spaces and operational areas. Um, the site is supposed to uh, be accessed via a forty-foot wide drive off of Mansfield Ave. The drive will feed truck traffic to the loading area to the south of the building. Um, that area has twenty trailer loading areas with two ramps loading, which will utilize, will be utilized by smaller trucks and vans. Um, the flex space, uh, in, it, it provides multiple tenant options as well. So we are providing employee parking along the east, in, in northeast and eastern half of the building. Um, that's about fifty-six spaces, and then we're providing parking to the west of the building, on the western half of the building, um, for around forty-four spaces. Uh, we are proposing the main entrance of the building on the northwest and northeast corner of the building. Um, there will be a dumpster pad location located at the southwest corner of the building. And um, that dumpster will be equipped with a board-on-board enclosure fence to block any view of the receptacle. The project will require two retaining walls, uh, at the northeast and northwest corners of the site. Uh, this will, this is done to make up the grade along the wetland edge. Um, and so we do not disturb the twenty-five-foot no-build wetland zone, uh, that we do about again. Uh, Kevin, if you could move to the grading plan, which I believe is the second. And two more, um, slides after this. I'll start alone. One more? All right, um, the project proposes a pretty extensive drainage and stormwater management system. Um, consisting of catch basins with four-foot some, water quality units, and uh, two stormwater infiltration basins. Uh, currently, the majority of the site drains overland to the north into the adjacent property that consists of mostly the wetlands. Um, and the site has minimal development at this time, with a, with a house foundation and a couple of chicken coop structures scattered throughout. Um, so the site does not currently have any stormwater management measures placed. Uh, or any mitigation, stormwater mitigation, uh, best management practices. Uh, the project will maintain the existing drainage pattern to the best extent. Uh, the project proposes an in- Uh the project proposes an increase in impervious area, um consisting of pavement sidewalks and the roof. Uh these areas will be directed to all the proposed stormwater management B and Bs that we have um designed for. The stormwater associated with the loading dock area in portions of the internal site south. Will be conveyed through a series of catch basins with a four foot deep sump. And then through a hydrodynamic separator before entering the underground infiltration system located to the south we- uh east. And then runoff associated with the roof and employee parking areas will be collected and conveyed through the same system with those catch basins of four foot sump. And another hydrodynamic separator before entering the surface stormwater basin located along the frontage of the property. Now, these hydrodynamic separators, um we designed them for the project, um. They they do use swirl concentration and deflection screening that captures a hundred percent of all uh potential floatable. Both the units have been designed to capture eighty percent or higher of the average annual post-construction uh total suspended solid. Um with the with the combination of the deep sump catch basins, the water quality units, and the infiltration basins that we're providing. The project does provide a total suspended solid removal of over ninety percent um for each system. So uh as you can see, this would be a a great improvement. To what's currently not out there today, and it will uh definitely mitigate what we are proposing. For the stormwater runoff. Kevin, if you could move to the soil erosion, I'll go over that briefly. That's the next one, yeah, there you go. Uh so we designed the soil erosion set of control plans um in two phases, uh this is the first phase, which depicts the general clearing of the property. And the setup of the surrounding SEC measures and construction entrance. Um along with the demolition of any existing structures that might be out there today. Uh in this phase, we set up the surrounding steel fence along the perimeter of the low lying areas. And in areas adjacent to the wetlands, we will provide additional protection with straw wattle and steel fencing backing. We are proposing the construction fence in the location of the areas that are not currently fenced. So this project does have some fences along the southern um property line. We that we are maintaining as part of this project, uh they are chain link fences that separates the the southern property to our property. Um so we will be utilizing them during the construction process as well. We've also included uh silk fa- catch basin inlet protections for catch basins within Mansfield Avenue in this phase. Um as well as catch basins along the neighboring side drive. Um if you could move to the second. Oh, you're, oh, perfect, thank you. Um the second phase depicts the SEC measures that will be maintained as part of the first phase, and additional SEC measures that will be essential when the project is. Goes further along and uh and starts building up. Uh we are maintaining the straw waddle and steel fence protection along the northern property line adjacent to the wetlands throughout the project, uh until stabilization. Uh we will be maintaining the steel fence along the frontage and southern property line. And we will maintain the construction fencing and construction entrance until the site is paved. Um during this phase, we will be providing providing additional silk sack inlet protections to the proposed catch basins. That will be constructed as part of the project. And that's essentially our SEC measure. Um moving on to utility. Um so we have provided a comprehensive utility plan, uh that that consists of a proposed electric cable, telecommunications, gas, water, and sanitary. Um for electric, we are proposing to tie into the existing utility pole. Across Mansfield Ave, um the service will travel on the ground until we get to the proposed transformer. Um and then secondary line will go into our building along the, I believe, southeast corner of the building. Uh for gas, we we tying into the existing main within Mansfield Ave. Uh this this main runs along our side of the western, along the western side, which is our side of Mansfield Ave. And um for water, we'll be, uh I know Elias said conversation with the water company, we've had our um in this conversation as well. Um for water, we'll be providing a fire loop around the building. This loop will tie in um into a two locations in the main. Um there'll be hot taps, and then our domestic will go off that loop. Um and that's uh that's pretty much the layout of the water line. And for sanitary, there is an existing sewer stub out there now. Uh in Mansfield Ave, so we will be connecting into that, and it is deep enough to provide us with a gravity system line. Um you can go to a landscape plan? Alright. This plan we are providing is stairs and trees and shrubs along the frontages of property, uh kind of uh in blocking the proposed storm motivation. Uh these these trees consist of red maples and the shrubs are um juniper along the base of the trees. Um we're providing shrub trees along the southern property, uh consisting of sweetgums, uh the shrubs along these will be. Uh a mixture of roseberry, ver- ver- vernum, and bayberry. Uh within the parking area, we're proposing some trees and shrubs within the landscape island. And we'll be providing shrubs to block the transformer and generator pads, and shrubs adjacent to the proposed dumpster pads uh along the dumpster enclosure as well. Pretty, pretty basic uh standard, so if we can go to lighting set? Alright, uh the project, the project proposes five light poles, um which fixtures within within the loading area and the front parking field. But the majority of the site will be illuminated um through wall pack fixtures that surround the building. Uh each of these fixtures have been designed to be dark sky compliant. And our photometric plan was designed to provide a minimal to zero light spillage over the property line. As well as zero light spillage over any existing wetlands, which um we try to satisfy for the COMCOM um commission. And with that, that's that's pretty much our site design, and I'd like to bring it back to Kevin for our traffic analysis and um architectural.
Thanks Casey, um so as part of our uh proposed application materials, we did provide and prepare a uh traffic impact assessment. For the proposed development, um so what we wanted to do is is really, really understand the the traffic volumes that are currently driving up and down Route forty. In the vicinity of our project site, and then understand how that operates, and then take a look at what our potential project would be generating from a traffic standpoint. And in order to do that, we utilize tools provided by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which establishes trip generation rates for a variety of different land uses. Um for this project, for a uh proposed warehouse building. We looked at the the potential peak hours of the um uh proposed facility, and also the proposed uh Indian tree traffic along Mansfield Avenue. And what we looked at was the weekday AM peak period and the weekday PM peak period, and while um. This does, uh this is a a larger building at a hundred thousand square feet, it actually doesn't have a significant traffic impact. Um during those peak periods, um uh that really creates a substantive impact for for the surrounding um uh traffic conditions. Uh this project is anticipated to to generate a total of thirty six trips uh during the AM peak period. And thirty eight trips during the afternoon peak period, and so what we did is we looked at how we would apply those to our driveway, the. Distribution, primarily which would be traveling north um on Route one forty towards the interstate. And um and we determined that the the project will not have an adverse impact on uh the surrounding uh traffic operating conditions for the area roadway network. Um as I mentioned before, uh this project has gone through some um peer review, both for uh site stormwater. And also uh traffic engineering, and I think the peer review comments from the traffic engineer essentially uh concurred with our findings from our traffic impact study. And has determined that our project will not have an adverse impact uh from a traffic standpoint. Um regarding the proposed building uh itself, we've included in your packet is our concept elevation. Um we are proposing a uh concrete tilt up panel construction. Um we've provided uh both horizontal and vertical um brakes to break up the facade, so it doesn't just look like a a a large model of building. We've incorporated um some metal panels at the corner office en- office entrances, and as uh we indicated before, we're actually proposing. To have uh mirrored entrances on both sides of the facility, so one. To the northeast corner and one to the northwest corner, which will essentially allow for the opportunity to break this up into potentially two tenants. If um that's the uh interest from the market. Um but we do believe that uh you know, we've been, we've designed the project uh to the best of our ability, that incorporates. Uh the majority of the requirements from the town of Norton regulations. Um one item that there are, uh we, one thing that we did include in our application was a request for some waivers, so I was gonna review those at the commission now. And then we can answer any questions that the commission, or the public may have. Um the first had to do with the width of the driveway, uh for industrial users, um they actually require a a fifty foot driveway width. We requested a waiver to only construct a forty foot wide driveway. Um on Mansfield Avenue, and we located it in a position uh similar to where the existing driveway is, and to line it up with some of the existing striping. Uh in Mansfield Avenue to encourage our our access essentially across the street from another driveway. Um while we were preparing our design, you know, we we wanted to ensure that we had a driveway of sufficient width to accommodate the anticipated traffic. Um but we didn't want to make it overly wide, uh just to create a large swath of pavement. Um so we are requesting a waiver for a forty foot wide driveway rather than a fifty foot wide driveway. Uh included in our engineering report is, in our project narrative, um our truck turning figures, which do demonstrate that there's adequate width. To accommodate the anticipated traffic, um with the proposed driveway width of forty feet. You know, one other item that I wanted to point out that that I know uh Casey mentioned. Um was when we were preparing our site design, you know, we wanted to make sure we were being sensitive to the surrounding areas. At some of the residential structures across the street from us on Mansfield Avenue. Um which is why we positioned the driveway where it was, and why we positioned uh and designed to have the loading dock facing the south. Because we wanted to to create the the maximum buffer we could and provide the most protection to. Um some of our residential neighbors across the street to really maximize the buffer in that area, to provide screening. Um where available, so that we wouldn't have, you know, we wouldn't create an adverse impact to 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 the residents and the and the surrounding neighbors, unto the best we could. Um there are uh another waiver that we we requested, um there was a request uh or there's a provision to locate the type. And uh the general type and quality of all existing vegetation, including specimen trees. We are requesting a waiver as the site is is uh heavily wooded in areas, we're looking for a waiver to um avoid having to locate all those. Um uh specimen trees, the the existing vegetation is is pretty much a larger site, and and uh we are proposing to. Uh remove a good amount of that areas, requesting relief on that. Um the uh landscape buffer area requirement, we're actually requesting a waiver to provide a larger front yard landscape buffer. Than what is otherwise required. Uh based on our proposed uh development, they require a minimum of ten foot and a maximum of fifty feet, from a landscape buffer standpoint, from. Uh any public way and in Mansfield Ave, we're actually uh I think approximately ninety feet away from the right of way line, and and that is. Because we wanted, as I said before, maximize that buffer through that area, we were also able to locate an above ground stormwater detention basin in this area. Um to really accommodate and to comply with the both the Massachusetts stormwater requirements and the town of Norton stormwater requirements. We wanted to do that in above ground bases of the best we could, so we are requesting relief on the length of the front yard buffer, because we do exceed. Um fifty feet. Um uh we're also requesting some relief for some of the um uh quantities of plants required within that buffer. You do have a requirement to provide trees and shrubs based on the square footage of the buffer area. Um we are uh proposing uh five trees and seventeen shrubs within that landscape buffer area. Um but but again, we're, that's that's slightly less than what would be required, but we are requesting relief on that requirement, simply because we are providing a larger buffer than. A larger vegetated buffer than what's required underneath the regulations, and that is something that the commission has the ability to waive if you so, if you uh choose to. Um is also requesting a waiver from one seventy five dash eighteen point five B, which is some additional planting requirements. We're looking for buffer strips um containing one tree per thirty linear feet of tree frontage, or a portion thereof. Uh shall contain um three shrubs for one hundred square feet of buffer area, again, this is the similar to what I just mentioned, trying to reduce. The overall amount of trees, just because of, based on site constraints, driveway location, um uh we are providing five trees, or nine would otherwise be required. Um but based on where the uh detention basin is and the driveway is, um we we request your consideration on on that, on relief for that. And then for uh section one seven five dash eighteen point six B perimeter and interior landscaping requirements. Uh looking for uh deciduous trees to provide uh essentially every thirty feet around parking areas. Um we have incorporated trees uh throughout the parking areas, but we are looking to maintain a significant amount of. Uh wooded vegetation just beyond the limits of our proposed site activity, and since we believe those trees will provide some canopy. Um for uh that relief, um we've requested, we're requesting a waiver from that requirement as well. So uh you know, as I mentioned before, we're currently still um in front of the conservation commission, we have a hearing, another hearing with them next week. Um we're providing, you know, comprehensive responses to all the peer review comments issued to date. Um uh so we don't expect this hearing to close this evening, as we wanted to solicit any additional feedback that the board may have. Um and then we'll, we we will be providing comprehensive responses with with uh some revised plans. Um to address any and all comments that are still outstanding with the peer reviewer. Um so with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Solin, um do any members of the board have any questions they'd like to ask of the applicant this time? I do see uh Mr. Brennan from Amory Engineers here for the peer review. So if we don't have any immediate questions from the board, uh we can get uh. Pat's comments from his, from his letter, and obviously there's some back and forth to go there.
Tim, can I ask one real quick?
No. Yes, you can.
It's okay, you can tell me that. Hey Kevin, I I'm not, I'm not sure if I missed, do you guys have any signage plans for for along? The street or on the building, have you given that any thought yet, or are you just kind of waiting until you get approval and a tenant?
Yeah, at at this point, that that's exactly the strategy, we're we're we're, you know, we haven't included signage, um yeah, I think we we may have shown a. Uh a placeholder for potential monument sign, but we're really primarily interested in securing um some tenant and. Uh you know, some tenant interest before we kind of finalize signage both on the building and for um entrance to the facility.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, for me personally, I'm I'm all for shrinking that driveway down to whatever size is safe enough for you to operate in, you know, I I don't think you need fifty feet there. I think that's very large in that location, so I don't know, know if forty's a sweet spot, or even thirty five. My personal opinion, you know, anything you could shrink that down, I I like that it's parallel from from the, you know, business across the street, I think that's important. Especially from a site distance standpoint, when two cars come out potentially at the same time, you can look across from each other, wave, acknowledge each other, so I think that's really, really important. So um just for me personally, you know, if if you can shrink that drive at all, maybe get another extra tree in there, just for an additional, you know. Landscape buffer to the housing, um I personally would be in in favor of that, so tho- those are my only two comments for for right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Okay. Not seeing a whole lot of board members jumping up here, so uh Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, so I just wanted to ask um the applicants, do you think that you'll be in a position to um. To finalize this with your your appearances that are, you're requesting as well as the conservation commission? Over the next month or so, would you be looking for a vote from the planning board?
We we do, and and we would, yes, we um we actually, as part of our response to um some of the peer review comments. We actually have to conduct some additional test, uh investigations out there. Um the information that our geotech engineer um had had compiled, we we need to do some additional testing, it's actually gonna happen um later this week. Um but we do feel confident that we're gonna be able to fully address and satisfy all the comments, and we we would hope to um. You know, to be able to close out our hearings with both conservation commission and planning board within the next, um you know, one or two meetings.
Great, that's good to hear, thank you.
And just, and you are aware that the the town does have an upcoming election pending?
I I think to 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 clarify that uh. We we, Kevin uh and Casey are working to address all the peer review comments. We hope to have uh closed this meeting with planning board out by the next meeting. We think that will, we we will have addressed all the comments well before then. Um and as for con- conservation commission, the next hearing is Monday, there may not be. Uh enough time to get that data in the hands of the conservation commission, there may or may not be. There may or may not be, if that's the case, we could close out Monday. If not, it would have to go two weeks after that. But our hope is to, um, close out the planning board hearing at, at the next meeting.
Thank you. Um, I know we did have a project in the recent past where there were some issues in terms of board members carrying over and not carrying over. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on here.
Yep, we appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I, I understand that our vote is independent of the conservation, uh, commission's vote. Um, and maybe we can recap, uh, you know, what is needed before we can actually take a vote. Um, I didn't hear anything tonight that would prohibit me from supporting this, but I don't know if there's any. Maybe recap on what we're waiting for at this point between now and the next meeting, and just make sure we, we're prepared to vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
It, it, can I, can you confirm what, when the next meeting is? Is it two weeks from tonight?
Paul, I believe our next one is in two weeks, correct?
It's on the twenty-second, March twenty-second is our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, unless any other members of the board have anything, uh, right now for the applicant, I think we would look to, uh, Pat Brennan from Amory Engineers to go through some of the peer review comments. I know, uh, the applicants already said they're looking to address some of them with some additional testing. Um, but if you want to just kind of give an update from your perspective, Pat, and go from there.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, for the record, Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers. I did submit a letter to the board on February twenty-fourth. Um, had, uh, eighteen comments in that letter. Majority of them, I think fourteen of them were related to stormwater and erosion controls. You know, in, in an effort to save time, I, I, I can go through the comments if you'd like me to. Otherwise, if, if they're going to address them and I get another stab at, at, um, going, you know, seeing how they address the comments, it, it might be more time effective, um, if, if you want me to wait till the next meeting to, to tell you how they've addressed my comments. Um, and, and if there's any outstanding comments that have yet to be addressed. Um, I mean, if, if there's, if, if you'd like me to go through the letter, I can, but it's, it's a few pages long here. Um, so it's, it's completely up to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, I guess. Um, I guess my question to both, I guess, to you and the applicant would be just in terms of if you're both understanding of what additional testing is going to happen and what that, that's looking to address.
Yeah.
Just so, if, if you're both on the same page with, with that, then I'm comfortable with that. If there's still kind of some questions about what, what needs to be done to address your comments, then.
Yeah, the, the additional, uh, testing that, that they're doing is some additional soil testing. Um, the, they had a geotechnical engineer do their soil testing out there, and, um, based on the test pit logs, it appeared to me that it wasn't a DEP certified soil evaluator, um, because it didn't indicate groundwater um, by what we call Redux features or models in the soils. Um, they only did it by direct observation, which was either standing in the hole or weeping from the face. Um, and the Mass DEP Stormwater Handbook requires that you use the Redux features to determine that seasonal high groundwater. Um, it typically, most of the time, depending on what the, the season has been like in terms of rainfall, most of the time your Redux features are somewhat higher um, than the weeping or, or the standing when you do these, uh, test pits. So it's, it's sometimes a little bit more restrictive, so that I've, I've asked, um, you know, for clarification on that. Obviously, Mr. Soli mentioned tonight they're going to do that additional testing, which, which is exactly what I was looking for. Um, and then based on the, that testing, I think my other comments, um, you know, there's a lot of them related to stormwater, but, um, as Mr. Soli mentioned, I, I think they're fairly easily, uh, addressable by them. Um, and I've, I've, I've peer reviewed, uh, projects in other communities that, that the Soli Engineering, uh, group has done before. And, um, they've been very responsive in the past for, you know, to address my comments. So I'm, I'm confident that we can, um, get them all addressed prior, most likely to your next meeting.
Okay. Um, and the, the non-stormwater comments in your letter, one was about the retaining walls and guard rail, guard rails?
Yeah, so the, as, uh, I think it was Casey had mentioned in his presentation, there's some retaining walls, um, along the, as you're looking at the plan there, it's the north side, the top of the, um, the top of the, um, plan there. Those nosing parking spaces on that, um, on that north side, as well as coming around the corner there between the, um, kind of the parking in the front and those nosing spaces over there. There, there's a drop-off over there with retaining wall. Um, first of all, retaining walls over four feet in height, um, require a building permit in the Commonwealth, um, with a, designed by a professional engineer. So they're going to need to submit those to the building commissioner for a permit. Um, and we were recommending a guard rail along those retaining walls. Um, they do have vertical concrete curbing proposed, which is somewhat of a, it helps with, with vehicles, but a guard rail just makes it that much safer, so that you don't have a vehicle driving off of one of those walls, so. Um, that was my recommendation on that. My only other rec, non-stormwater, two other stormwater comments, one was, um, in relation to the fine of course thickness for standard duty pavement. And then the other one was to verify that the adequate water supply for fire protection. Um, based on their comments earlier, it seems like they're working with the water department to, uh, to make sure that, that supply is available.
Okay. Um, so.
And, and just to touch on that, yeah, we, we, we agree and concur the, on the, the retaining wall for the building permit, that's a, you know, reasonable, you know, that's required. So we agreed, we created that, obviously. And then we agree, you know, we agreed to add the, the guide rail that, that Pat mentioned. So, and, and as you mentioned, I think we can address, uh, all of his comments, and, you know, we're, we're confident we can, we can, uh, um, you know, satisfy all of his concerns, and, and you guys got a really good peer reviewer with Pat. As, as he mentioned, he worked on other projects together in the past, and he always does a very thorough and comprehensive review, so.
Okay, no buttering up the peer engineer here. Okay. Uh, do any members of the board have any, uh, questions or comments, um, for Mr. Brennan before, um, we move on from here, um, kind of, I think if anybody can feel free to disagree, but I'm fine with them moving forward, addressing the comments, uh, with some additional testing.
Yeah, Tim, I'm good with that. Kevin, I just have one quick question. Have you thought about construction hours yet? That's normally something we put in our condition, so if you have any proposal on that, um, please feel free to share.
You know, generally, we, we look for seven to five. Um, you know, we don't want to restrict it too much, because obviously the, the, the sooner we can get through a construction project, we think the better. Um, you know, but we'd be happy to, you know, hear what, what the town has considered for previous applications, but generally, we'd like to get started at seven. Um, you know.
Yeah, I think that's generally what we've done. We ask on Saturdays, it's a little shorter, especially since you have probably residents across the street. We, we'd like you to give some consideration to that, or I personally would. And then what's your idea on timeline for the schedule? Let, let's say you kind of, you know, get through us before elections, to, to Kevin's point. I think that, that's a, a, a great plan, a good schedule. What's the thought on, on, uh, construction for the project?
Um, well, we're, we're optimistic to get, you know, we want to get through this local permit process in the next coming month, and hopefully move the construction sometime in, you know, late spring.
Okay, all set, thanks.
Okay. Uh, any additional comments from members of the board or the applicant for a peer review at this point? Okay, and are there any quick questions or comments from members of the public regarding this project? Um, as we've said, this is probably going to be continued, this is, we expect to continue this to our next hearing. Uh, but Mr. Vincent, I see you raised your hand there, is that correct?
Yes. Um, outside observer, I was watching the meeting here. Um, I just have a couple of things I wanted to ask. There, wasn't there a apartment complex that was going to be right across the street next to the Great Woods Plaza that went all the way to the reservoir? And that would be a hundred units, so that's going to be adding significant traffic. And I wonder if that was thought of when they did their traffic study, that there could be several hundred people coming and going out of this, uh, housing complex or apartments or whatever they're going to build there, every morning and coming back every evening.
I believe that's, uh, a forty B project going in there. Um, Paul, if you wanted to.
It, it is, Greg, and I, I gave the, uh, the traffic study for that project, along with a couple other projects that were recently approved to the applicant for them to consider, which they did consider as part of their traffic study.
Okay, very good. And then the, the, you call it a, a basin, a runoff basin, that, that's a long Mansfield Avenue? That isn't anything like the, 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 um, basin that's like down at the corner of, um, the entrance of the Great Woods Plaza there, that stone, um, stone water pit, yeah, with the cattails and it's chain-linked off. Uh, are they going to, is that going to be a, a standing water type of thing?
Oh, it, it is a, it is a detention basin, which I think is similar to what you're describing for the other plaza down the road. Um, you know, ours is designed to, to, you know, to fully drain, so it wouldn't be a wet bottom basin that we anticipate, that we can fit. We're going to get recharged there, and we're going to be able to fully drain that out. Um, but it is, it is a method of, of, you know, handling stormwater. Obviously, whenever we're, we're proposing to impervious surface, we have to make sure that the rate of stormwater leaves our site is the same rate that it does under existing conditions. So we need, we need adequate stormwater volume to, to kind of be able to collect and hold that water back, so we can release it at the same rate as it leaves today.
Okay, because I.
Or better.
So, yeah, as I was going, the one that.
Uh, it's correct.
The one at, uh, the plaza there, they kind of missed the vote, and now that, that was more or less a mosquito bee breeding pit. But you say the water would be drained off, so you wouldn't have a wet bottom there, so that's, oh. Because, uh, the residents across the street would, 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 uh, have to get their mosquito eaters going pretty good. Um, that's what, that's all I had, outside observer. It looks, it looks like a nice building, it looks very good. We could use it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vincent. And remember, my offer to join the board still stands here.
Yeah, someday.
Okay.
I mean, I just retired, so I do have time coming, but I can't, I, 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 I can't, uh, you know, conflict of interest type of stuff.
Understood. Okay. Um, so unless anybody has any further questions for the applicant or anyone else at this time, um, we, I know we're looking to resolve some fear of your stormwater comments and anything else, and continue it to our meeting of the twenty-second. Is there anything else that we want to discuss prior to that?
Motion to continue the public hearing till March twenty-second.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue? Okay. Hearing none, I'll go to a vote. Wayne?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are continued to the twenty-second. Thank you very much, everybody. We will see you in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us to the end of our planned agenda this, planned agenda this evening. Paul, are there any other housekeeping items that we wanted to discuss at this time?
Nope, we're good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Wayne?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everyone. See you in two weeks.